Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on April second, two thousand twenty-one. The meeting will convene at six thirty P M and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to be ordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty P M in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Now Vice President Erdenberger will lead us in the O P S vision and mission statement.
The vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
All right, roll call, Mr. Redd.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger.
Here.
Head.
Here.
Holman.
Present.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snipes.
Present.
Snow. Tila.
Here.
Eight present.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Snow from tonight's board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Head and seconded by Mrs. Cassidy to excuse Mr. Snow from tonight's board meeting. Mr. Redd.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Abstain.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tila.
No.
Six aye.
Thank you. Next we have school spotlight, Mr. Maskell.
Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Logan. We have several guests among staff and student leaders tonight that we are very excited to welcome related to an announcement connected to four of our new schools opening thanks to the twenty-fourteen and twenty-eighteen bond program approved by our voters. To begin the presentations this evening, I'd like to welcome Principal Supervisor, Mrs. Carrie Collins to the podium to continue.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board and Dr. Logan. As one of the principal supervisors, I had the wonderful opportunity to support in the school naming process for our two new elementary schools opening in fall of two thousand twenty-two. This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing two students that supported on each of the committees, which included the School Naming Committee and School Leader Subcommittee. Each student will be presenting the final school naming recommendations for each elementary school. After our elementary students present, I will then hand it over to our Principals, Dr. Carrie Carr and Mr. Tom Lee, who will present the school naming recommendations for each of our new high schools. At this time, I want to introduce our elementary student leaders who will be sharing the final recommendation for school name, mascot, and school colors. First, we have Thomas Mancia, a current fourth grader at Bancroft Elementary School, and he is supported along with his sister, Lindsay Mancia. I don't know if you can see her. And she supported with his parents and his sister in the School Naming Committee for the school at Tenth and Pine.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Mancia and I am a current fourth grade student at Bancroft Elementary. I enjoy being a part of the school naming committee along with my family. We felt honored, I, we felt very honored to be on the committee and participated in every scheduled meeting. I am excited to be able to share with you our final recommendations for the elementary school at Tenth and Pine. Our final recommendations for the school's name is Pine Elementary. We chose this name because the school will be located on Pine Street. We recommend the school colors to be green, white, and gray. And the mascot to be the porcupine since there will be large evergreen trees preserved in the process of the building. The new school we want to select, we wanted to select a mascot that represented, that represents an animal that can be found in an area with a lot of trees. Don't you think Pine Elementary porcupine hat has a nice ring to it? We thought so too. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas and Lindsay. I would also like to introduce Eva Picardo Lara, a current fourth grader at Gomez Elementary School, and she's supported in the Student Leader Subcommittee for the school at Fort Crook and Child's Road.
Good evening. My name is Eva Picardo Lara. I'm a current fourth grade student at Gomez Elementary. I enjoy being part of the Student Leader Subcommittee. When I heard that my principal and counselor selected me to participate, I, I felt very honored. I'm excited to be able to share with you our final recommendation for the elementary school at Fort Crook and Child's Road. Our final selection for the school name is Forest Station Elementary. We chose this name because the school will be near the Fort No Forest and the word station came from our committee conversation about waiting the name, about wanting the name to also represent the historical feature in the neighborhood, the train. We recommend the school colors to be dark green, white, and tan. And we all, and the mascot to be the owl. We chose the owls because we wanted to choose animal that can be found in the forest and we also like that the owl symbolizes wisdom and knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Eva. And now I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Carrie Carr.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Carr and I am so excited to be the future principal of the Sixtieth and L High School. I am joined this evening by five students from the School Naming Student Leadership Subcommittee. To my left, I have Gavin Strouts and Samantha Nanfido from Norris Middle School. And to my right, I have Tadeo Jimenez, Angel Mas, and Melanie Guadaro Serano from Indian Hill. Sorry, Angel and Tadeo are from Ashland Park Robbins and Melanie from Indian Hill. These students gave up some of their Friday afternoons to be a part of this committee and to give their input, so I first want to thank them for their time. We are very excited to announce the proposed name for the new Sixtieth and L High School. It is, on the count of three, one, two, three, Buena Vista.
The name Buena Vista recognizes the beautiful views of the school and adds to the identity of South Omaha and much of the student population.
The colors selected are black, silver, and burgundy. The colors represent strength, ambition, sophistication, individuality, and accomplishment.
The colors also represent boldness, power, and radioactivity.
The mascot selected is, is the bison. Bison are a force to be reckoned with.
The bison is the ruler of the plains. They are pragmatic animals that are resourceful.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lee for a hundred and fifty-sixth and Ida.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I am very fortunate to be named the principal at a hundred and fifty-sixth and Ida, and I am very blessed with the opportunity. Looking forward to it. As you can see with all the young ones that have been up here already and with Lena that you're going to hear from in a minute, you can see why I love the Omaha Public Schools and why I love our students and the work that they do. Why I'm a big believer in all of our elementary, middle, and high school. Every chance I get to say that, I'm going to say it because I am a big believer in the Omaha Public Schools and the work that we do. And I thank you all for your leadership. With me tonight is Lena Lawson, and she's going to do the speaking tonight. I didn't have a script prepared because I want her to do all the talking. She'll introduce the name, the mascot, and the school colors. She is a fourth grader at Standing Bear, soon to be a fifth grader at Buffett, and she is here tonight with her mother, Julie, as well. So thank you for being here, and I'll turn it over to Lena.
Hi, my name is Lena Lawson. I am a fourth grader at Standing Bear Elementary, but next year I will be a Buffett Bobcat. First, I would like to thank Mr. Lee for giving me an opportunity to be a part of the Student Leadership Committee. This really means a lot to me. I was so excited when I got to come up with ideas for the mascot of the new high school. I got to work right away and began researching. This is what I found. Number one, one thing to know about me is that I love singing, dancing, and musical theater. My favorite musical is Hamilton, but since we cannot be the Alexander Hamiltons, I had to come up with something different. One of my first favorite movies was The Greatest Showman. Turns out, the main character Hugh Jackman also starred in the movie Wolverine. Number two, my mom was asked to livestream the basketball games this year, so I got to attend a lot of games with her. One thing that I learned is that you want a mascot that is fierce and intimidating. Based on my research, it turns out one of the most fierce animals on the planet is the Wolverine. Number three, next I asked my parents what they thought a good mascot would be. Both of my parents grew up in the nineties, but they don't want me to tell you their age, but they're forty. And their favorite basketball team was the Fab Five. It turns out, the Fab Five played at the University of Michigan, and their mascot is a Wolverine. Number four, at school, we are learning about endangered animals. And with my research, I found out that Wolverines, that Wolverines are at risk of becoming extinct. I hope that if the mascot is a Wolverine, it will help bring awareness and maybe we can help save them. Based on this information, I suggested the Wolverine as the mascot of, to the group. And the group liked the name as well. We all thought Wolverine, Westview Wolverine sounded awesome together. And Wolverines are powerful, fierce, and strong. So from this ten-year-old's perspective and the entire school naming committee, we think Wolverines would be a great mascot. Are there any questions?
So the school name we chose obviously was Westview High, and it's because it is a view of the west. Okay? It sits on a hill, and it's a lovely hill. It's a lovely scenery. It sits on a hill, and it's a lovely hill. It's a lovely scenery. Uh, then several positive comments about it. And the Wolverines, uh, as Lena said, it appeared on two, if not three, of our school names. And so Wolverines was definitely a kid's choice, uh, and the kid's voice is important. And now about the school colors?
The school naming committee suggested the colors orange, royal blue, and black. We all agreed to pick colors that stood out and are different from o- other OPS schools. Here are why we selected each color. Orange represents success, encouragement, creativity, and determination. Royal blue represents co- com- uh, com- competition, tranquility, and calmness. Black represents power, strength, and elegance. As you can see, these colors represent characteristics that can help all students be successful at school. Thank you for have link, thank you for letting me having a piece of your time.
This is so exciting. You know, it makes me very proud and just privileged to have such tremendous leaders in our school district, from the itty-bittyest all the way up to our, our middle school students. So thank you so much, students, for, um, sharing your time and taking part in this great work that you have done for us. Um, we are looking forward to seeing these schools be built totally and getting you all into these buildings, and looking forward to this vote later on today. So another round of applause for you all. Thank you so much. Parents, we shall all be very, very proud of your children. Thank you. All right, now moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications. Mr. Roberts, Treasures Report.
President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Logan. The financial statements for the period ended February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one have been finalized and submitted for your review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Dr. Logan, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, those here in attendance and those watching the livestream. First of all, to echo, uh, Mr. Lee's comments, uh, you're giddy when you get to see your students. Um, and today I read to, uh, kindergartners at Ashland Park Roberts, uh, at Ashland Park Robbins, and, uh, to have the students here tonight is certainly, um, re-centers us as to why we're all here. Um, as you heard from our students and leaders, tonight's agenda includes recommended names and mascots for our two new elementary schools and the two new high schools scheduled to open in the fall of twenty-twenty-two. I'd like to thank our, uh, two principal supervisors, Dr. uh, Fatima Fullmore and Mrs. Carrie Collins, for all of their leadership and making sure that everybody's voice, uh, was heard and students', uh, voices, um, were the most prominent in, uh, how they wanted to name their schools, uh, as we move forward. I, I want to personally thank each committee for the time devoted to making recommendations. Committees were comprised of stakeholders representing each school's incoming students and families who have worked diligently over the past few months. Uh, each co- uh, each committee worked with district staff and school leadership throughout a series of meetings to brainstorm and recommend a name and mascot for each new school. Options were discussed and narrowed to the list, uh, the board, uh, will review and vote on this evening. Thank you to our Printing and Publications Team for their excellent design work and bringing the committee's ideas to life in the images you saw this evening. We are OPS proud to have their talent on our team. A recommended name for the new school lo- located at Forty-second and Y Middle School will be brought to the board at a later date. Uh, in attendance this evening, we have, uh, several principals who, uh, are either switching schools or, uh, new principals. We have one new principal, uh, Mrs. Alicia Gillespie. We're very proud, uh, to welcome, uh, Mrs. Gillespie as the new principal of Washington Elementary School. Dr. Kim Jackson has the, uh, in, uh, the, uh, in- enviable task of going, following Mr. Lee at Northwest, uh, High School. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, for being here. Uh, Mr. Mark Kellen, uh, will be transitioning from Adams Elementary to a bigger school at Indian Hill, and thank you for being here, Mr. Kellen. And, uh, last but la- not, uh, Dr. Carrie Carr is here, obviously. Uh, just saw her, um, now going to the proposed, uh, Omaha Buena Vista High School. And then, of course, uh, the inimitable, uh, Tom Lee, uh, who will be, uh, the principal at the proposed Omaha Westview, uh, High School. Uh, we appreciate you being here, um, as your names are on the agenda, uh, tonight for confirmation. Uh, tomorrow is April sixth, and tomorrow is the ACT test for all juniors, um, who will participate in required state testing, taking the ACT or the NSCAST, Alternative Assessment, depending on their program. Freshmen, sophomores, and seniors will not attend school tomorrow due to the testing. Uh, attendance is very po- important, young people. Please go to bed tonight and turn those iPads off. Um, you know that we can see what time those iPads go off, just in case, uh, you didn't know. Um, but, um, we, uh, look forward to you being on, on time tomorrow at seven forty. Buses will run as normal for all high schools, and eleventh grade students will have the opportunity to stay for lunch and, and regular to miss, as missile at three oh five. Building principals will provide information regarding post-test activities and release information as obvi- uh, facial coverings are required, as is the, um, daily protocol. Students currently in the remote learning program should have received details about onsite testing. Parents with questions about tomorrow's testing should contact their student's school. Uh, say yes to the prom dress drive. Uh, we have, uh, like, three thousand dresses at this point. Uh, Dillard's dropped off two more boxes, and tomorrow Von Mar is bringing nine hundred. Uh, and they're all brand new, um, which is awesome. But, uh, now through April ninth, uh, we're continuing to accept them. Uh, we will have a giveaway on Saturday, April seventeenth. It doesn't matter whether you need, doesn't matter where you live. Uh, if you need to, uh, have a dress, uh, please feel free to come. Pre-registration is required, um, so that we can adhere to local health guidelines on that date. Congratulations and kudos are in order for a number of our amazing students tonight. Uh, I gotta put my glasses on, make sure I get this right. Alicia Monfungizi of Bryan High for earning first place at the Omaha Metro Science Fair and additional honors, uh, from the American, uh, Chemistry Society. I know that Alicia wants to be a physician and is well on her way. Central High's Madeline George, winner of the twenty-twenty-one Nebraska State Invest Write Fall Contest. Uh, Naya Lyon of Burke High for earning a national silver key from the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for her art project Hair. All Omaha Public Schools who competed in the Nebraska Educators Rising Twenty-Twenty-One State Leadership Conference. All Omaha Public Schools chosen to compete in the Ma- Nebraska State VEX Robotics Tournament. Uh, you have represented Omaha Schools, uh, well, and we are very proud of you. Please be on the lookout for a video series set to begin later this week. It will feature profiles of our graduates and their accomplishments during high schools. Our new Portrait of a Graduate video series will be featured on our social media channels now through May. These inspirational vignettes capture students' perspectives on ways Omaha Public Schools prepares students to become resilient achievers, collaborators, communicators, critical thinkers, innovators, and global achievers. We encourage you to watch and share these videos as you see them featured in social media, and we begin the, uh, um, the, the, uh, journey to graduation in just, uh, two months. Uh, we thank you in advance, and this concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Board members? Ms. Crackey?
Just one second. I apologize. I did miss someone, and I did see him come in with his lovely wife. Uh, Mr. Langston Friesen is here. Mr. Friesen is going to be transitioning from being the elementary principal at Rose Hill Elementary School to be the principal of Norris Middle School, and we're thrilled that you are here and welcome to your wife as well. Thank you.
Ms. Crackey?
Yes. I wanted to note the children that came, and I'm sorry they aren't here right now. I wanted to tell them that years and years and years from now, they will be so proud that they helped name the school. And that they came here tonight and got to present that. But the school name will be there, and so every time they go by, or even if they do move, they will come back to town and make sure the grandchildren see the school they named. So I thought that was really great that they got to, uh, take part in that. One of the things I did this week that, wa- or last week was the most fun I've had all year. I got to go to a school. It's the end of March. I'd had my testing done, and I was free to go. I went to Jocelyn, and I happened to come in on Stripe Day. Stripe Day was indicated by the children all wearing something striped, whether it's vertical or horizontal. That was very nice. And that's the, they have positive patches there. I got a positive patch which says posi- positive pad. And then they, um, on the back, they write a note and send it to the home of the children, noting the positive thing they did at school. So that was all very good, but again, I want to say that, that is a beautiful school. And on the entrance, because our superintendent was there, and she got them a pair of Jaguar shoes, they are sitting on a desk right out in front. They did not say from Dr. Logan. However, they pointed that out to me, and that was another point to note when I was there. But I love going to the schools, and all of the schools that are in my sub-district, please, this is, uh, this is it. I'm coming to see you, and it's always a good visit, so I'm looking forward to it. And I will have to go and see Tom Lee in his new school because he does have on the shirt color tonight. He always does that. So I don't know, if you ever catch him without the, the colors on, you'll have to tell him, so where are your colors? Thank you, Tom. And, uh, thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey. Ms. Snipes?
I just want to, um, express how excited I am about the high schools. Um, some of you were on the board when my son was still a senior in high school, and, um, just some of the issues that we were having, one of them being when one of his teachers told me, when he wasn't doing that well, that there wasn't much he could do because there were so many kids in the class, that he had to help the kids who needed more help than my son first. And, you know, part of that was even why I ran for school board. So as we talk about these schools getting ready to open, it's just such a relief to me because, you know, parents won't have to, to hear that, and it, it's no fault to the teacher, you know, because they're doing the best that they can. And so that is exciting to me. I'm excited for even South Omaha, you know, with all these schools being built. I mean, I remember going and doing enrichment classes in Castalar and hearing about, you know, kids having to go to classes in, inside of homes, you know? And so this is very, um, I think, exciting for the district, for families, um, for South Omaha as well. And then just the, um, the thought that was put into it, you can see it with, um, the, what the colors represent, you know, names are really important, but even more than that is, you know, including the young people in the process, you know, that creates buy-in. Um, and so I'm just really happy to see the, um, inclusiveness, which I didn't expect anything less, but to see it upfront and in person, and maybe I'm just kind of feeling good because it's good to see some kid at the podium again, but, um, you know, it's just a, uh, really great feeling. So, um, tonight was, um, really good, and so I'm just really grateful and happy, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snipes. Uh, Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Holman. I wanted to, uh, direct your attention to a couple of the, uh, out of the thirty-two consent items that are on the list today. Um, some of them caught my attention. I thought you might find them interesting as well. Consent item one point two and item one point three two both represent memorandums of understanding between the district and Midlands University, uh, for the first one, and UNO for the second, for the purpose of providing, uh, K- Twelve bilingual education endorsements paid through our Title III grant funds for our teachers, which is a way to, um, uh, increase the number of teachers that we have with the ESL endorsement, but also to increase our ability to, uh, serve the population of people for whom those services are, are certainly needed. And, uh, the expectation is that the participants, the teachers, will work for OPS for three years after they've completed the program. Item one point eight is a relatively boring purchase of, uh, adult and child face masks, but I just want you to know that I looked at the cost of those face masks, and we had fifty-three bids received. A lot of faceback, uh, face mask producers out there. And depending on which ones you looked at, the bid that we chose saved thirty thousand dollars over the next highest bid, and it looks to me like we saved a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the highest bid. So, uh, your taxpayer money is being stretched as far as we can. Now, some of the most fun things that are happening are some items that are going to be sent home with our students for the summer, thanks, uh, to, uh, grant money and some very generous, uh, local donors and supporters of the district. Uh, item one four provides for the purchase of twenty-six thousand four hundred book and tote bag bundles. Each tote bag will have ten books for students in pre-K through third grade and seven books for students in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Uh, they've been chosen to be particularly engaging so our students can be reading over the summer. Um, also, item one twenty-nine is, uh, thirty-one thousand skills practice books for p- pre-K to, um, sixth grade students to practice math and literacy skills over the summer. So even our students who are not going to be participating in our, uh, enhanced learning programs over the summer will still have something to take home before they go home from school for the summer and to work on to hopefully help supplement their learning over the summer. Now, for the kids that are being, uh, engaged in our summer school program, we have a whole bunch of STEM kits. We have coding, digital, animation, drones, robotics, digital animation, artificial intelligence, uh, experimental, hands-on projects, and invention projects. So, um, items one twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight describe those, uh, materials that are being purchased to, uh, enhance our enhanced learning for the summer. So there's thirty-two items on there. Those were just some of my favorites, and I wanted to share them with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Erdenberger. And, um, I would just like to say congratulations to all the principals who were appointed to your buildings. Um, very excited to have you all. Um, congratulations to you. And then also, I want to piggyback off of something Dr. Logan mentioned earlier, um, about the, um, high school students taking the ACC, ACT tomorrow. I also wanted to make sure to, um, offer best wishes to our third through eighth graders who will be also, some of them already started this week, taking the NSCAST assessment, um, which stands for the Nebraska Student Center Assessment. My daughter, who is in fourth grade, will begin hers tomorrow at Fullerton. I know they started with, um, certain classrooms today, but good luck to you all students as you embark upon this important assessment, and make sure that you rest, that you eat breakfast, you dress comfortably, and that you do your very, very best. Any other board comments? Great, thank you. Now, we're going to be moving on to consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Oops, I apologize. Sorry. I'm moving too quickly. I'm trying to get this meeting over with. I apologize. I forgot about public comment. I'm sorry about that. Um, moving on to public comment. Masks are required to be worn in order to speak during public comment. If you are not wearing a mask, a mask will be provided to you at the podium to wear while speaking. We have six speakers tonight who have submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure that each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. We have six public speakers, as I've mentioned, and in a seven oh three. And our first speaker of the night is Marlon Harrison. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marlon Harrison, M-A-R-L-O-N Harrison, H-A-R-R-I-S-O-N. I live at ninety-five twenty-four Blondo Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three four. Um, I just want to talk about the school name proposals. Um, when they put the news book about them on social media, there was a lot of mixed emotions. A lot of people felt like they were good, but a lot of people felt like they did not represent the, um, Omaha community that well. Because when we think of schools like Ponca, Pawnee, King, not Ki- Skinner, um, Dodge, and just named a few, they, they represent Omaha, and a lot of people feel like the two new high schools do not represent the Omaha community as well. And I just want to suggest a couple of new names, if I can, for the, um, sorry, for the high schools. For the South Omaha High School, I would like to name it International because when you think of South Omaha, especially during its early years, it's, it's like an international community from the Gypsies, from the French, to the Germans, to the Jews, to this current climate, to this, not current climate, but, you know, the current state, which is Hispanic and Native American and stuff like that. So I would like to name it International. You could keep the mask and everything, but I feel like International would be a good name for it. for the high school in South Omaha. And I know there's a problem with naming schools after people. And I would like to kind of do that for the South Omaha High School because a lot of people felt like Westview was kind of too corny, too overused with W West, Miller West, and stuff like that. So I would like to name it after President Gerald Ford. Gerald Ford is from Omaha, Nebraska. He was president from 1974 to 1977. And you could keep the mascot and the name, but a lot of people felt like Westview did not, they don't like Westview because it kind of like doesn't have like the Omaha feel to it. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Marlon. Next, we have John Sciarra. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Good evening, President Holman, members of the board, and Dr. Logan. My name is John Sciarra, J-O-H-N-S-C-I-A-R-A. My address is 4032 Seward Street in Omaha. What I wanted to speak about was student behavior in the classroom. I have a unique opportunity to observe students' behavior because I drive school bus. And the school bus is an extension of the classroom. First of all, the students that I am driving seem to have no problem with profanity as part of their normal conversation. They just throw it out without any concern. Besides profanity, they seem to use the N-word as a greeting to one another. I have written up and sent write-ups to the school to address the issue. Basically, I seem to be getting placated and just told how they appreciate my service to the students bringing them to the school, and it just seems to keep going on. Then there's the problem of wearing masks in the bus. Wearing of a mask was a school, you know, Omaha school policy up until January 21st of 2021. That policy now is an executive order 13998, signed by President Joe Biden through the administration of the Department of Transportation. And the school buses fall under the Department of Transportation. My commercial driver's license, I require a Department of Transportation medical card to be carried with me. So it's no longer just a OPS policy, but an executive order that seems to be ignored. Besides not wearing masks, students are supposed to maintain social distancing. I have about five to eight students on a bus that holds 72 people. As soon as they get onto the bus, they basically start roughhousing. They strike one another. So they're not maintaining social distancing. My concern is that what starts off as just, you know, kids being kids will eventually escalate to something, to the point where somebody will be getting hurt. And their behavior seems to have escalated already. We had one young lady sitting on the lap of a young gentleman, and she was basically bouncing up and down in a, in what I would call almost a simulated, you know, having simulated sex primarily on the bus. Besides the roughhousing escalating, the use of the N-word has continued to escalate. Today, the students are calling people outside the bus as we are going by the N-word. You know, I don't know if I have to use that word properly to emphasize how horrible that word is, but it escalates because so far the students don't see any consequences of their actions. Besides, you know, profanity and other inappropriate behavior, they don't seem to have any idea that they should be staying in their seats. I can't keep them to stay in their seats. They're sticking their heads and arms out the windows. They're throwing things out the windows as we go by. As I said, I've written up the policies a number of times. And all I wind up getting is just how grateful they are that I take care of the students, bring them to school. So it appears as if maybe this needs to be escalated so that the school is aware of it. Would you be interested in what the school is that I drive for?
Yes, Mr. Sciarra. Would you just be able to share that with Mr. Ray and he can?
30 seconds.
All right. And if you have any questions, I'm available for any questions if you wish.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. You know, we do have expectations and that bus ride is an extension of the school rules and the school expectations. And so thank you so much for all that you do and sharing with us tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brandy McMorris.
Good evening. Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Brandy McMorris. First name B-R-A-N-D-Y, last name McMorris, M-C-M-O-R-R-I-S. I am here because on March 22nd, my sixth-grade daughter was assaulted at her middle school using a plastic knife that had been snapped in half to be concealed in her pocket. The attacker, another sixth grader, cut my daughter's wrist. It was unprovoked and without warning. The injury produced blood and took several days to heal. As you can imagine, this caused my 11-year-old to be in extreme fear. It was to our disappointment that after the incident, the principal handed out only a temporary suspension. I asked the principal to provide me with the handbook to make sure his actions were in accordance for this type of incident. To my surprise, the handbook clearly stated that the incident was grounds for reassignment and/or expulsion. As the details of this situation continued to unfold, the attacker began to perpetuate her bullying behaviors on social media immediately after getting suspended, which got several other students involved in creating a hostile environment in her absence. I had no choice but to take my child out of the in-school learning environment. When these new details were provided to the principal, he still offered no other alternative as a means to keep my daughter, the innocent one, the A student with no history of negative behaviors, safe. He made no effort to keep her from having to sit at home. She was now not only dealing with the trauma of being attacked and bullied, but now alone away from her peers and in essence victimized again. I will also add that during the course of my response to the situation, I was informed by the Douglas County Sheriff, who was the resource officer for the school, that he was never made aware of the assault that led to injury on the day it took place and was not notified until the following day at the end of the day. Also, a full week went by and not one counselor from her middle school called me or my daughter to check in, to see how they could offer their services to assist in any way in such a horrible situation. That is more than unfortunate. It has now been two weeks since and have done all in my power to advocate for my daughter and be a voice for her. Eventually, in a mediation meeting with OPS, it was brought to our attention that even though I was given the Davis, oh, I'm sorry, the middle school handbook by the principal as reference or a recourse of action for this particular incident, there was actually another K through sixth elementary handbook, and that was in fact used to give the guidelines in handling the young lady who attacked my daughter. I did speak with several people here at the tack building, which did include the principal's superiors. And in their defense, they did their best to rectify the situation and reach a resolution. But even with that being said, my hands were still tied and I was faced with only three options. Send my daughter back to school with a student who was unfazed by her penalty of suspension and could very well target her again. Keep my child home, isolated, after doing absolutely nothing wrong, or uproot her and send her to an entirely different school. So since there was no more that I can do for my child, moving forward for every other child that may face this, improving the handling of these situations is imperative. Middle schools and OPS needs to address the discrepancies in their current handbook by updating it to include the sixth-grade policies and procedures, the code of conduct, and the following. It needs to be publicized to the students and their parents.
1 minute.
Parents and/or guardians, periodically reviewed and revised. And it should also include strict guidelines that resource officers have to be notified in matters of assault in a set timeframe. And in case they are absent, other proper authorities are filled in. There should also be a plan in place that addresses the aftercare for students who have been victims of assault, bullying, and other behaviors that have tremendously impacted their safety and social emotional well-being, as well as those.
30 seconds.
Who have been initiators or aggressors of such behaviors. By taking these steps, middle schools will be fulfilling their purpose and mission statements to advance students' achievement through rigorous academic curriculum focused on essential skills taught in a respectable, responsible, inclusive, and safe learning environment and show academic growth and academic achievement and citizenship. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and sharing. Next, we have Michelle Wilson.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I didn't plan on speaking. I was just there to give my friend support. But I just wanted to say I'm a product of Omaha Public Schools and my son is a product of Omaha Public Schools. And when Brandy told me her story, it was quite contrary to what my sons, my daughter, had experienced. My children were always seen as being an individual. They were supported every step of the way. And when there was an issue that arise, they got the help and the support that they needed. And I just want to encourage the board to take her grievance very seriously because we want all of our parents, we want all of our students to feel welcomed. We want them to feel safe. We want them to have a place where it's not hostile, that they can come and learn and be supported in their efforts. And when she told me the story, it was very disheartening because it's not the, it's not what I've ever experienced for my kids. So I just wanted to share that and to share that Brandy had an opportunity to get some information and be empowered in her journey to advocate for her child. And I think a little bit more needs to be done on behalf, in this particular school, I don't know about other schools, on empowering parents to be a voice for their kids. She just happened, she's around, surrounded by educators and people who have an understanding. And I thought about those parents who are not surrounded by those who are experts in the field of education and cannot get the information that they need to be proper advocates for their kids. So, you know, Brandy, she's here on behalf of her child, but she's also here on behalf of those kids that do not have a voice, those parents that don't know what to say. So thank you so much for listening and you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for being here. Can I ask you, Mr.?
My name, sorry.
Yes, and your address, please. Thank you.
Michelle Wilson, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N. Address 10917 Y Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Patrick Rinn.
Good evening.
Good evening. Patrick Rinn, 4903 California Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I will start off with, went through the public schools, graduated from Omaha North in 1967. When I went to North, we had discipline. And I won't mince words with anybody on this board. I'm here, frankly, I have a need to do something to protect the teachers and the employees of the Omaha Public System for the way you've handled that pension. Now, you're looking at a financial planner. I practiced a craft for about 41 years. 401K plans, KIOS, SEPs, tax-deferred annuities, IRAs. I know what I'm talking about. About eight years ago, Doug Kagan and I went before this board and we warned you. We made it clear that the way this pension was being handled was simply malfeasance. You had people making investment decisions that didn't know what they were doing, period. And it was obvious. And you did nothing about it. You shook it off. And now because of your inability to act, your lack of political courage, frankly, you owe the teachers an $848 million shortfall. That never had to happen. But it did. Three times I got myself into trouble with this board because I kept warning you. These people don't know what they're doing. They're investing in swampland, literally in Florida, India, Africa. I knew that the teachers that were on the board signing off on this, these decisions, they didn't know what they were doing. They had more letters before their name, after their name, underneath their name, on top of their name, they had in their name. Now, you're facing over three-quarters of a billion dollars. And everybody in this room needs to know that. And you don't have the money to fund it. I'll tell you who's going to pay for this is the taxpayers, the voters, the members of the electorate. This did not have to happen. And now you're, I've got my contacts. You're saying, well, it's about 25 million a year is going to fix it. No, it will not. You've created almost a slave condition with your teachers. Now, if they want to get out of OPS and go to another school district, it's called a 1035 exchange. The money that should be in their pension fund is not there to basically transfer into another school district. Because the contributions that OPS should have been making by law and by contract, they don't have to pay the teacher. And then it's not there to begin with. So they can't transfer. They can't get out. And here's what you need to do.
1 minute.
You need to perform a performance audit. We pleaded for this years ago. Navity did, Chip Maxwell, the state senator. A performance audit will tell you how much money is coming into this place, where it's going, and how it's being used. And the public has a right to see that every year, preferably in the paper. A performance audit is not. Is not something you guys are going to do an audit with. You're not going to have a fox watching the hen house. What's going on here is wrong. It's fraud and it's thievery.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Miller. Excuse me, server, finish. Excuse me. Thank you. My apologies, Mr. Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of the school board. My name is Robert Miller. That's R-O-B-E-R-T-M-I-L-L-E-R. I reside at 7301 North 107th Avenue in Omaha, 68122. I am the president of the Omaha Education Association. I would like to let this board know how much we appreciate the work to get the vaccine to all OPS staff. The process to offer the vaccine to all staff was implemented with few hiccups, if any. There were many individuals, including some of you who played a significant role in getting the vaccines to educators. But there were also individuals outside of our OPS community that pushed as well. This evening, you will hear about an informational item, J2B, the proposed calendar for the 2021-2022 academic year. OEA appreciates having the opportunity to provide input to the calendar committee via Mr. Schmidtbahn and Mr. Wakefield. We met with these two on March 24th and shared our concerns and offered input. One was addressed and is reflected in this informational item tonight, and the others are not being reflected. I would like to share with you the concerns that we offered. We had a concern of the staggered start time for staff at the beginning of the school year, and that was adjusted accordingly. The next item was the end of the year ending on June 1st. We asked to be considered having the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving break be a student contact days, as it had been in the past, to allow the school year to end prior to Memorial Day weekend. We asked that the spring break be moved from the week of March 7th to the week of March 21st. This is due to the length of time without breaks for students and staff. And we also offered no on the intercession that has been proposed. Teachers have 188-day contract, and I realize offering this is optional for staff as of now. The teachers will not be told it is optional when students sign up, and the administrators are needing staff to fill these positions. I understand that there are many factors that play in developing a calendar. While I applaud Mr. Schmidtbahn's ability to create it, and I appreciate the involvement of the stakeholders whom it impacts the most, I'm aware of a survey that is set to go out to staff and parents, and OEA will amplify the message to our members to complete it. I look forward to hearing the report that will come from the results that the district receives. I urge you to consider our input on the 2021-2022 calendar. It was a year ago when life, it was one year ago when life as we knew it was altered significantly. We've come a long way, we've learned many new strategies, but nothing beats seeing the familiar faces of our students and having them actually in our class. Though the smiles are hidden by mask, we can tell that they're smiling and engaged through their eyes. However, learning was not lost, it was altered significantly, and it looked different. Students and teachers use tools at their disposals to continue to learn and develop. Together, all staff have risen to the best serve our students of OPS, and should be commended for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Do you have anything that you want to share with Mr. Ray, or will you just email? Great, thank you so much. That concludes public comment for tonight, and now, we can move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second? Oh, sorry, excuse me. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Smith and seconded by Ms. Crackey. Any discussion? Any extensions?
Yes, Dr. Holman. I need to abstain from item, two items this evening, item I3 and item I13, both are in regards to the Omaha Public Schools Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cassidy. Mrs. Cassidy will be abstaining from items I3 and items I13 relative to Omaha Schools Foundation. Mr. Ray, please roll call.
Erdenberger.
Yes.
Head. Yes. Holman.
Yes.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Naina.
Motion passes, thank you. Now, moving on to action items, J1A, approval of the following names, mascots, and school colors for the two new elementary schools and the two new high schools. Pine Elementary School, 10th and Pine, Forest Station Elementary School, 1,000 North Fort Quick Road, and Buena Vista High School, 60th and L, Westview High School, 156th and Ida. We have Ms. Carrie Collins here, along with a whole team of folks that will be joining her as well. Thank you so much for being here.
Good evening again. We wanted to just make sure you are aware of the process for naming the new schools. So, our process consisted of forming two committees, led by the principals at the high schools, and because principals haven't yet been selected at elementary, led by the principal supervisor for each elementary school. The first committee was the school naming committee, where we had representation from principals, district leadership, parents, incoming students, and community members. The student leadership subcommittee was our second committee, with student participation from the feeder schools. There were a total of four meetings for each elementary school, and five meetings for each high school. Our work began with each committee brainstorming a list of ideas for all, from all stakeholders, and at each follow-up meeting, the committees continued to have discussion until we narrowed down to our final selections for the school name, school colors, and the mascot. So, any questions from our team?
Colleagues? Any questions? Well, that was pretty simple.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the information. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the names, mascots, and school colors for the two new elementary schools and the two new high schools as indicated in the agenda item, J1A, and the attachments.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Ms. Crackey and seconded by Vice President Erdenberger. Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who participated in this process, and just so some appreciation for those kids who really threw out those great ideas. It's great to hear from our students, and it's really enlightening, and it's really exciting to be able to come to an agreement, so just thank you for putting together the process and coming together so we can make a vote today.
Anyone else? Vice President Erdenberger?
I was just going to make a reference to the 60th and L school. I have some friends that attended Ryan, and they're very happy to know that black and silver are part of the colors for 60th and L. Thank you very much.
Any other? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Naina.
Motion passes, thank you. Super exciting, yes. All right, moving on now to item J1B, approval of the report of the legislative committee including recommended legislative positions. Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. So, the legislative committee has one bill that we are recommending a change of position on, that is LB529, it's the State Lottery Funds Bill. The state lottery funds, right now, if this bill doesn't pass, they sunset on June 30th, I believe, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so the assignment of the lottery fund sunsets on June 30th. So, the bill, we originally had a monitor with research position on it. After it was advanced on general file, there was a amendment put onto it that changed a provision relating to behavioral health dollars, as well as mental health training in schools that we do support, and so we're recommending that the board take a support position on the bill. Outside of that, we've got a couple of other quick updates as well. On OSERS, I think everyone's aware of LB147, which is our retirement bill, there was five bills, originally, they're all being combined in an amendment to LB147, we're expecting that to come out of the committee this week. Other bills of note, LB5 moved last week, LB83, which is the virtual teleconferencing, moved last week, LB88, the student journalist bill, is still on select file. There's a pandemic relief aid for TOSA that's still on select file. Of note for TOSA for the next couple of years, under the budget that just came out of the Budget Committee last week, it looks like for fiscal year '21-'22, we'll see a, just over a billion-dollar decrease, or sorry, not us, but the state will see just over a billion-dollar decrease in state aid, which is mainly due to increasing property valuations. And then, '22-'23, we'll see just over a billion-dollar increase in state aid, again, mostly due to property valuations. And then, there's three major items of note for the school district. LB364, which is the Opportunity Scholarships Tax Credit, LB408, which is a 3% cap on tax requests, and LB454, which is the School Property Tax Stabilization Act. We did oppose all three of those bills, and they are all three on general file right now, but they're not scheduled for a hearing. So, with that, I would make a motion to change our position on LB529 from monitor with research to support.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Head. We will accept that motion to approve the committee's new recommendations as represented in the attached document. Okay, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow. Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Naina.
Motion passes. Item J1C, resolution and supportive legislative package transferring measurement, excuse me, management of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System, the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement Board, and reaffirming that any and all liability for OSERS remains fully and completely vested with the Douglas County School District 0001, the plan sponsor. Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. So, our legislative committee is extremely thankful for Senator Coulterman's partnership on the series of bills this year related to the school employees retirement system. We're working to ensure a strong and stable retirement system for the employees who serve our 53,000 students each day. So, tonight, the resolution before us reiterates what we know to be true, that the board supports the transfer of OSERS management to the state public employees retirement board, and that all liability for OSERS would stay right here with the OPS Board of Education. As legislators consider the package of bills related to OSERS, we hope that this resolution will help clarify our commitment to this meaningful step forward. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion by Mr. Head. Roll call, please. Yes, discussion? No? Mr. Snow, do you have something? We don't have to second it. Do you have a question? Roll call, Mr. Ray. Do you have some support, discussion?
I just wanted to follow up on the purpose of this resolution and make sure everyone's familiar with the current status of OSERS. Just to make it clear, all of the investment decisions regarding the OSERS pension fund were transferred to the state investment branch four years ago? Four, Nebraska Investment Council, thank you, four or five years ago. So, those investment decisions are no longer being made by the OSERS board or confirmed by the OPS board. What this is addressing is the transfer strictly of the management of OSERS. At this point, management is largely limited to making sure that certain audits and actuarial reports are completed and submitted, and a singular decision about the assumed investment return. So, at this point in time, there's virtually no, I'm responding in some respects to the gentleman that spoke earlier, the OPS board is no longer controlling those investment decisions and is no longer part of the management of OSERS. And what this will do, this resolution will do, is confirm that the management of OSERS, which is really just the audit and actuarial report and requirements, will also be conducted at the state level, along with all of the other retirement funds for all of the other teachers and other public employees in the state of Nebraska. So, I support this resolution in making sure that not only the management of the funds, which has already happened, but now the management of the administration of OSERS be transferred as well.
Thank you for that thorough description, Vice President Erdenberger. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Crackey. Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Naina.
Motion passes. Moving on to information item J2A, freshman academy implementation metrics and assessment. Mr. Scott Schmidtbahn. Good evening.
Good evening, and good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Ms. Erdenberger, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of our board. Tonight, I will be discussing plans for how we will measure the implementation of freshman academies that this board approved during our last meeting. The freshman academies concept has a strong basis in research. Supporting freshmen to success requires a system-based approach, as many different individuals are required to serve in different capacities to support implementation. Similar to the overall plan for freshman academies, the measurement plan I'll be detailing tonight has its basis in research as well. Implementation in a human system requires the following: that everyone involved must understand their role and contribution to this effort, and how that individual work and those individual goals support the overall initiative; that attempts at behavior change persist until mastery is achieved; and that identifying opportunities to tailor or add supports to our plan based on findings while implementing is a key component. All marks of this measurement and the success there within include recognition that implementation will require significant motivation across our system to align all staff to the new initiative and away from older practices and processes; focus all stakeholders on implementation metrics, and this allows school staff to see how far they've come in implementation and to allow for greater focus on the needs that remain. Additionally, at the district level, this allows for district staff to see opportunities for support much earlier on in the process than other measurement models would allow, and that that support can come at the right time for implementation success. Measurement will be conducted using quantitative and qualitative metrics, for example, stakeholder feedback surveys, and ensuring not only that key components are representative in our student information system, but that they are continuing to increase in quality. Metric categories and examples include key component implementation and quality. Things we'll be looking for here include things like the presence of the freshman seminar, feedback from students on whether the program is valuable in their eyes, their recommendations, students' recommendations particularly, for growth and improvement, as well as feedback from our staff. We'll look at whether and how common plan time for teachers is yielding deeper supports for students in the transition to and through ninth grade. We'll also look to the governance board, its makeup, influence on the program, and the clarity of members' roles and their positions. Stakeholder feedback will be a big component of all measurements. Integration of government's board feedback is one example, as is inclusion of student voice in the governance process in a way that meets student expectations for authenticity and influence, and parent reactions to engagement opportunities. Lastly, student experience metrics will be a key component. This includes a social network analysis, which is a measurement of Facebook usage, but the, really, that we're delivering on the smaller learning- but the, really, that we're delivering on the smaller learning environment and that students do have a common cohort that they, they get to spend time with and have those friendly, familiar faces in the classroom. We'll also be measuring student engagement, programmatic awareness of freshmen, and opportunities for student leadership and fellowship. The timeline includes both smaller-scale, more frequent measures, as well as less frequent, deeper measures to ensure we have that critical implementation data exactly as is needed. Why? This allows us to identify support needs, as I've mentioned, early on and before too much time has passed and inaccurate practices can become entrenched. It also allows for adjustment through a continuous improvement cycle, hallmark by effort, measurement, adjustment, repeat. Following successful implementation, causal analyses will be conducted. That is, we will seek to specifically link the depth of implementation of freshman academies to key improvement metrics of student outcomes. This timing is important because implementation must be solid before a beneficial impact can be directly linked to freshman academies. Waiting until implementation occurs reduces the likelihood of false positives where important student metrics improve, but where these improvements are unrelated to program implementation. Also, the likelihood that unrelated declines in important student metrics demoralize the staff and reduces motivation for implementation if these analyses and the linkages there within are done too soon. Anticipated impact, uh, anticipated implementation impact metrics for the freshman academies will include improvements to student behavior and attendance, increases in student well-being, increased student achievement, and greater levels of on-track-for-on-time graduation for students who receive this experience. Couple notes worth mentioning. Uh, we will continue to track and measure all of these significant outcome measurements and will work with schools to support students to greater levels of success across all grade levels. However, we will wait until implementation is assured before trying to determine how this effort has improved student outcomes. Would now gladly answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie. Colleagues, Ms. Snipes?
I always have to ask this question. On slide four, can you just, um, tell us who the stakeholders are? And I was also wondering, when you mentioned student leadership opportunities, what some of those might look like?
Sure, I could tell you who the stakeholders might be. I would look to my, uh, colleagues from CIS to talk more about the student experience, but it will be anyone touched by this work. So the governance board has clear roles and expectations for how their insights and expertise will be utilized. So we'll be checking with them to make sure that that has occurred. There will be opportunities for family engagements, and we want to ensure that families find those to meet their expectations. Additionally, students will be a big part of this measurement, as will teachers that, that serve them, making sure that all the components met to meet their needs and to improve student outcomes are, are achieved and are improving in quality as would be expected. It's really about making sure that the plan as it was designed is implemented with fidelity so that we can glean the research improvements, uh, the research-based improvements that have been found elsewhere.
Thank you.
And going back to our student leadership, um, from our presentation two weeks ago, we talked about student connectedness, um, and opportunities in their schools, about, uh, about creating ownership in their school, in their school plan. Um, so we're ensuring that our schools, our students will have an experience in their school to be involved in organizations, um, that will connect with their interests starting as early as freshmen, making sure that they're connected to their, uh, their, their freshman academy team, um, to better, um, become leaders in their school within that team and their classrooms and such. Uh, and then also, um, really including students in, in, like our governance boards, as, as, uh, Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie said, um, including students on advisory boards and such to ensure that, um, we are hearing student voice as well as the voice of our, of our families, um, in our community.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, um, so the, the measurement is in alignment with the strategic plan, so there will be, uh, monitoring on a regular basis and evaluation in order to adjust as necessary. Is, I, I heard you say that correct?
Absolutely. That's the key component of this is, is as support needs, be it awareness needs, sometimes you can solve problems with development or knowledge transfer if a key goal or component of a goal or effort was missed. Uh, but other times, you know, needing to anchor and adjust based on what we're hearing from staff on the ground can be relative to timelines or expectations. But just making sure that we are measuring with depth and frequently that things are going as we would anticipate with implementation.
Thank you. And then, um, will we be tracking the number of changes, um, in the academy? So I have a child at Burke, if he does business and then decides he wants to do communication, will we, uh, kind of identify that number so we can see what those trends are?
Absolutely. That would be a key piece to track. Um, given our concerns we've heard about, you know, the need and the want to be able to change paths if another seems more appealing to a student. And so that's certainly something we'll be looking to record in campus and be able to monitor, uh, the degree to which that's happening because it could inform efforts, um, in providing awareness and greater, um, experience prior to going into a track if necessary, things of that nature.
Perfect. Thank you. Absolutely.
Mr. Head?
Yes, thank you, President Dr. Holman. And thank you for the, for the presentation and putting this together. I really appreciate it. Um, so going back to the, the stakeholder feedback then, and I, I appreciate your comment about, uh, you know, it's students and families and kind of getting with their, so on those stakeholder groups then, how, how would they be put together? Is it just kind of parents picked at random or do the schools pick? Does the district pick? Or is it folks who just reach out and say, hey, I, you know, had, had an issue here, love this part of the program and wanted to share that?
It would be much more systematic, I think, than many of the ways you've described it. So if a, a family engagement opportunity is hosted, for example, uh, we would invite those families who attended that widely communicated opportunity, just given that they had the opportunity to observe it and to give us their critical feedback. In other instances, um, all freshmen have a parent, uh, or parents, and so we would be looking to them from time to time to get a sense of, have you heard anything? What's your, you know, general understanding from your student about this experience? So just making sure that we're getting parent perspectives as well as students, teachers, and all other stakeholders who have an opportunity to observe any component of implementation.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And then on the, uh, the casual analysis metrics, and I know you went a little bit into it in your presentation as well. Do we have, like, a specific target that we're looking for as far as, you know, increased attendance or, or behavioral or, or, you know, well-being, things like that?
I would tell you, coming out of a pandemic, it's hard to tease out exact changes we would expect to see. Typically, making those types of precise predictions is based on a long range of data, long longitudinal analysis to see a general trend, anticipate a change, calculate the effect size, given what you're seeing, and then anticipate what you might get if you fully, um, return on the effect of a program, uh, which is all documented in the literature. Problem is, we don't know necessarily some of the challenges that the pandemic has created for our students and how those may affect not only the trajectory or longitudinal performance on these key metrics, but also how quickly a student might recover on them. And so it, it, it becomes very difficult without that uninterrupted longitudinal trend to make precise predictions. Um, we have seen significant improvements at Benson and other schools that have implemented freshman academies and academy models. And so we would be looking to those understandings as well as we look to see what we're going to get from these freshman academies and knowing that just directional improvement certainly is enough. We want to see significant improvement. There are a number of ways not to get too far into it, but there's significance from a statistical standpoint with, you know, greater number of individuals in that study. You have greater amounts of degrees of freedom and a much like, greater likelihood to find a difference between two numbers. And then there's a practicality significance where you may get a significant, from a statistical standpoint, effect from a slight incremental change. But from a practical standpoint, you know, when you break that down to number of student days that were, uh, you know, benefited by this or, or other metrics, kind of doesn't meet expectations. So we, we will be putting, you know, hard eye on that, given the amount of effort that will take to bring the program into fruition. Uh, but we have seen evidence that these can be very successful in our system.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, just picking it off the back of, uh, Minister Head's, uh, question about, uh, you know, setting the goals. Is that, are you talking about just for the first semester? Are you talking about the entire year of the freshman academy to kind of set like a base of where we are and then setting a goal? Or could you elaborate a little bit more on that, please?
Sure. So implementation can take varying amounts of time. It depends on where staff are starting in that work, their level of awareness and understanding of what specifically is expected of them and throughout the entire system for which they're a part. So implementation and implementation sciences in general would suggest a change of this magnitude will take a significant amount of time. Now, the, the key point here, I think, is before we can causally say the freshman academies impacted these key outcomes and to this degree, because you may see a 5% increase in student attendance, but how much of that was due to the freshman academies? And so being able to precisely tease that out requires implementation. Now, you can get to a point of starting to make some causal understandings by looking how, you know, once, let's say, a, a, there's a strong cohort or a number of schools or a, a, a single school that has strong implementation, you can start to get a sense for that building based on their prior performance, on how that implementation then causally affected student outcomes after implementation has occurred. But much like it takes all system players in a school, from teachers to leadership staff and all others involved in freshman academies, to kind of get their basic understanding of, of what they need to do differently and then go through the, the multiple iteration efforts that are required before mastery is obtained. Um, you know, we have to focus on those areas that we're working to implement and, and try and try again as we try things that maybe don't hit our own expectations for success. And so really, it is allowing for teachers and other involved staff to get a strong level of implementation. Once that strong implementation has occurred, it'll take some time for freshmen to respond to it, once they come into that experience. So we would be looking down the road quite a ways. I would say at least a year of implementation seems to be fairly standard for this type of work and then would start making some of those causal understandings thereafter. Because this work should return results on these metrics. And so if we aren't seeing that, there's a problem. And so being able, through that implementation measurement, to identify where the problem is as early as possible to get it corrected means those great outcomes for our students come as early as possible.
Are we assessing these eighth graders right now and finding out where they are? Are we assessing our eighth graders right now to find out where they are?
Sure. We are measuring all these metrics across all students currently. It's not the implementation metrics, but those key outcome metrics.
Currently, right now, before they enter the freshman academy, will we have data on that to see, but this is where student A was before entering freshman academy? We don't know where they are going to be because this is new, but this is where they are right now.
I see what you're saying. So I think you're speaking to like a cohort effect. You may have a, a cohort of kids who have great attendance come in and the freshman academies happen right as they come in. And so wanting to see that longitudinal understanding to say, well, these kids weren't improved by, their attendance wasn't improved. Their attendance was pretty good to begin with. It would be looking at overall improvement over the prior cohort who didn't have this experience while also controlling for those longitudinal effects so that we can try to, to control, as they call it in a statistical sense, any extraneous variables that might be influencing that. So to answer your question in a, a more simplistic way, yeah, we're, we're, we're checking to see where they're at in eighth grade. That trajectory of performance, attendance, or, or whatever on these metrics would be measured throughout this time period, prior time periods, as well as then as they enter this freshman academy experience. Uh, one key point to mention is we actually are starting in some ways to measure current ninth grade programmatic awareness and things of that nature based on surveying efforts underway. So we're already starting to collect some of that foundational data to say, okay, did this improve with this new cohort of freshmen beyond what we would expect given their prior performance?
Um, I appreciate this, um, and also I, I personally believe that always an exit survey is always good for students when leaving those programs, uh, to see if it was effective. And I, I've mentioned this before, any data that we receive over this, I would really appreciate if we could have it broken down, not just by sub-district, but, uh, by demographics, um, because you really don't know, uh, certain groups, certain, certain subgroups that are struggling, uh, in a certain area of the community or in a different cohort until you actually see it. And that allows, not just board members, but that allows the community to kind of respond to that, or even the district to pivot and respond to that. So I appreciate as much data as possible that you can provide the board, but also for the community, uh, because that's, I mean, these board meetings are going to be the only way that we're going to be able to respond. So we know what to do as board members to be better. So thank you again.
Most definitely. And certainly, we want all students to benefit from this. And all means all, so that means disaggregation across all student groupings as well as intersection between multiple groupings.
Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Um, I think I have got, if I understood what you were describing, first of all, there are some subjective evaluation, program awareness, social network sorts of issues. How often do you expect to do that analysis? There was a quarterly and semester, I believe, on the objective side. How often do you expect to do that sort of subjective analysis?
So things like a, a social network analysis can be done after scheduling has occurred in earnest. So after, you know, the first semester or second semester as placed students in classes to see kind of how students attend classes with similar groupings of kids uh, to provide that small school experience within a freshman academy cohort. And so measurement will occur at timeframes that make sense relative to measurement. So for example, if you have your governance board meeting a couple times in a quarter, you probably wouldn't want to do multiple measures within that quarter because there wouldn't be a lot to measure. It's always the balance between not wanting to, you know, measure for the sake of measurement, but hitting exactly when key things are occurring and capturing that data as close to the experience as possible with just a little time for reflection. And so we're still in the final stages of kind of teasing out exactly when exact components, you know, a governance board at Benson will meet to, to identify when is a good opportunity for measurement there, as well as creating some already built-in opportunities, knowing that the governance board needs to hear feedback from students. Plan could be to have a student survey ready to go that we would work with each school's governance board, you know, to get them comfortable with the process, to develop them what they would like to ask their students. So looking at those key hallmarks for implementation and measuring as those actions occur without over, you know, going too overboard. So i- it's key, I guess, to walk that balance, to make sure we have the critical data that our schools and teachers and all staff in the buildings need, as well at the district level, to make sure that we're doing our part to support things while underway.
Now, do I remember correctly that there is a governance board per school, although there may be half a dozen cohorts in the freshman class or what, however that works out? Is that right? And so presumably, the governance body will have a representative or two or three or whatever from each of the cohorts, right? Is that how that works?
I believe so, but let me get the experts.
You and I think so. What does he think?
That would be correct, yes. It would be, you would have students representing, um, different, different groups or whatever would be part of that, of that advisory board or governance board, yes.
I wanted to follow up on, uh, Ms. Snipes' question about stakeholders. Um, I've only heard one reference to teachers being on the governance board. And I, I don't mean that you aren't going to have them. I just wanted to confirm because teachers will know as well as anybody whether this is working or not. So I just want to confirm that teachers are in fact going to be part of the governance board. And then looking at the data question, will you be in a position to say, oh, what's, why has this cohort got higher program awareness than any other cohort or whatever? So I mean, you'll be able to break it down, not just in terms of the academies as a whole, but by cohort in certain respects? Is that right?
That's correct. And, and it may result in some follow-up efforts to include things like focus groups with random selections of students across, um, different student groupings to make sure we have full representation so that we can get a better understanding of, you know, what is really leading that effect. And I think that's really, it's one of the key components why implementation measurement is so critical because you may be able to find, uh, some answers within your own school or own school system where a school, you know, discovers a way of doing, uh, within the guidelines and expectations that really resonates for students a little better. It's about identifying that, measuring it without being too intrusive, and then sharing that, that wealth of knowledge both within the school and across the system.
Because I can really imagine that even just in one school cohort, A and C are really clicking and, you know, what's the difference between that and the others that aren't? So going, moving on to the objective, uh, uh, assessments, and this is, I think, picking up on what both Mr. Head and Mr. Snow were asking. I'm not even sure quite how, where to go at with this, but how will, where I'm going with it is how will we know it's not working? And part of the question I have is, I recognize this last year is irrelevant for so many reasons in terms of what we're trying to measure. But presumably, we could establish a baseline from the year before or even the two years before to see what kinds of attendance, behavior, well-being, I mean, the, the things you listed, how were they working for our freshman classes two, one and two years ago? And then be able to use that as a baseline to see if this is making any difference? I mean, I mean, intuitively, it seems like it would, but I'm assuming we're getting a baseline, so we can see if it's making a difference. Another question, I think, picking up on what Mr. Snow had asked, was you can look at other programs in other cities, and see what kinds of improvements they saw, and if our improvements in these five factors are significantly lower, even though it's a different school district, so on and so forth, that would presumably, will we be carry, comparing our data to other school districts for purposes of seeing just how we're doing, not, you know, recognizing there's a little apples to oranges going on?
Scott, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmitzmann. Couple things. One, I think we have to be comfortable with next year being our baseline year. We can't compare, it's not, it's just, it's not even, it's not good research practice to move to other baseline years when you're starting an initiative. So, whereas we, could we do that? We could, but it would be really faulty research practice, and it would invalidate the, whatever the outcomes that we got. So, we have to be comfortable with the experts on research establishing when the baseline year can be. The second thing is, we're using the word governance board for these advisory boards, and I think it's really important for us to understand that they are advisory, that they, they work to support the, their role is a supportive role, to give, to provide feedback, to use their touchpoints for resources and things like that, as we, because both, those are very powerful words, and we want to make sure that we're really clear on that. Just for, for the cycle metrics that do this work, it's really important that they identify those, the metrics that can be used, and we cannot turn the clock back. And I understand the, perhaps the impetus to do so, or why one would, but, you know, this is one child at a time, rolling up our sleeves. This is not a magic, a magic wand. This is the hard work of identifying what every child needs, making adjustments to however, you know, programmatic changes, or class changes, or teacher match, or all kinds of things, all the things that we, that schools are doing every day to make sure kids are successful. And I just think it's really important that we start there, and not feel like, you know, that we're going to sprinkle ninth grade freshman success framework dust, and, you know, it's going to be easy, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but we do know that with systems and structures, that we guarantee that we're going to do, and the fidelity work to implementation. I will tell you, our research division has said to us many times, very, very clearly, that we have to measure that, because all this other stuff is not going to be, we can't say it's causal if we don't know what we've done. So, I just want to make sure that we put that out there, and I'm supportive of the, of Mr. Schmitzmann and his team, and the work that they sometimes have to shake us to make sure that we are paying attention to how we go about this work, and realizing it's, it's step by step, I was going to say it in another language, but step by step. So, thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on where I thought I was going with it, and I do not pretend for a second to have, be a statistician, or to have done well in the one statistics class I took, so definitely not. I guess, kind of what I'm thinking about is, and I'm, I guess I was assuming it would be an easy, an easy win, that if we looked at our numbers from a couple years ago, and then look at our numbers a year from now, or two years from now, we, it seems to me we will see improvement, but I understand that it may be a faulty way to go about it, and I'm convinced me that it's not necessary. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, if we don't take a baseline for a year or two, I guess I want to make sure that we are making adjustments as we go forward, and not waiting for what is probably more sound research, to wait two, three, four years before we see an actual trend develop. So I guess what I'm really asking is, particularly with these objective measures, how soon might we know that there's something that's not working, and?
Well, I think you have fidelity of implementation. That is going to be the first thing to tell you whether or not you have an opportunity. And I, again, I want to caution between someone saying, well, you can see it in just a few weeks or months, it's just not, it just doesn't happen that way. Would be great if it did, it makes people feel good, or people say it because it makes them feel good. We did this, and this happened. But in order to be sure about it, you have to say, okay, district administration, you said these things were going to be in place. How many of those things are in place? And then to what degree they are in place? Because that's going to give us the first indication that we have a chance of those being the things that caused it. You know, next year, we're going to have the smallest ninth grade cohort because of the change in birth date that happened nine years ago. So, we're going to have a smaller sample size, right? So, N, N is going to be, remember that from statistics? N is going to be different than it has been for the last several years. So, that, see how Mr. Schmitzmann is really excited that I even know this stuff? But that, I mean, that is really, that's going to be really important, because you may say, well, how come there are so many less ninth graders? Well, right now, we know there's going to be less ninth graders, because the date that children could enter changed seven, or however many years ago, that they would have been in kindergarten. And so, we're thinking about all of that stuff, and how that would fit into telling the story of how this is moving forward. We do have a lot of information from Benson that really has a very successful implementation model, and fidelity of implementation that we can use, you know, to build on and move forward. So, I just, I keep, you know, it's important to manage expectations, right? And it also is important for us to give good, good information, and be honest about how the information is moving forward, rather than us saying, well, we could present this, these kinds of data points kind of zigzag, because this will help us say it was, was good. We'd rather, we'd rather be honest and forthright than less so, and just give people what they think maybe would feel good, because we want it to actually be good for kids. So, I apologize, but I really wanted to make sure that we were, that support the team on making sure that they don't feel, that the data is not weaponized, and they don't feel the pressure to create data points that will not be based in the research.
Well, if you promise not to make a reference to N again, please, because I was having some PTSD there. I guess, bottom line, without getting into the details, and the letters, and whatever else is involved, there will be ways, over the course of even the preliminary years, to see whether this was a good idea or not. And part of it may be from our subjective surveys, and I recognize it's not governance, I do know it's advisory, but there will also be some other data, otherwise, why are you here, to establish that we're collecting the right data, and it looks like it's working for us. Thank you, enough of that.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Crackey?
Twice, I've heard Benson mentioned, and so, while we're mentioning Benson, and we're talking about measurement, and we're talking about results, are we able to see a chart of Benson's, since they have been with their academy, and what the results are? We should be able to.
Wouldn't be one chart, maybe a series of charts and tables, but I get your point. Yeah, certainly.
In a brief way, to just give us the end result of that, or how it compared year by year, because we have one of the schools doing what we're talking about doing. So, why can't we use that and look at it, and see what it looks like? We would understand better what's going on, I think, if we could see that.
Certainly.
We actually have it. I received it this afternoon, I think it was asked for about 3:00, and I, we have it this PM. Mr. Ray is going to send it to all of you.
He has sent it already?
It has it, since Benson had model status with their freshman academy, the information's there for you.
And I think I might have already looked at that on our internet and seen that, if that would be possible. Was that on our internet, then?
Mr. Ray just sent it to us tonight also. Oh, you mean like on their website, is that what you're asking?
Did we have it this afternoon?
Yes, we have it right now in our email, as well.
Okay, that is probably what prompted me to say that, because I didn't see that much difference in it. That's why I wanted to know for sure from you.
Well, I think there are some certainly significant differences.
Okay, that would be very interesting to take a look at that.
Absolutely.
And discuss it a little bit, and show it to us. Would you do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Mrs. Cassidy?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Very, very interesting, and my colleagues have all asked lots of good questions. I have one simple question that kind of pigges off what Vice President Erdenberger, was one of her points. No, not, not related to statistics, you're okay. I don't want to go there. You've talked a lot about, one thing that I like that I heard is that it sounds like this measurement plan can change, will change, can be adjusted, all along the way as needed. So that's wonderful. I'm just kind of wanting to know a little bit more about your data collection. I've seen survey collection on there, you've talked about giving surveys to stakeholders, to teachers. I feel like sometimes, we're very heavy, survey, survey, survey. I mean, as parents, we get a lot of surveys. It's very easy, as we've heard from parents over these past couple months, that surveys are lost, they're not seen. It becomes, in people's minds, evident that maybe they did not receive a survey. So I'm wondering, is there any other means for measurement, rather than surveys? Is there any other tools, I guess?
Sure.
If that's a fair question.
It really depends on what you're trying to measure. So some things will have within our student information system. And so really, you should only, what I would say is, you would only really want to survey a family member, a parent, if they had an experience, or maybe once a year, some smaller number of times, just to get their global perspective. Because, you know, we all have opportunities to observe our children, and to get a sense of their experiences. But other families' experiences may differ than mine, but after ninth grade, it was much harder to engage in deep conversations about substantive effort in school. And so, we will look for those opportunities, where we want to make sure if parents have something they would like to share with us, that we have those opportunities open to them, through, there are a variety of things we do. We have a parent voice survey, links in the corner of every calendar, there's signage in every building. It could be a component we added to that, to say, I went to this high school, I experienced this event, scan the code. Then the parent is making that choice to provide that information. In other instances, we may do a targeted effort, if we know a number of families attended a special event, we reach out to them then. Again, it's really that balance, you know, even with students and teachers especially, we know that there are many other things they could be doing in their day beyond completing a survey. And so whenever absolutely possible, to glean information from other records that don't require that level of input, we would rely on that. But to get that perceptual understanding, to see if that meets the perceptual expectations of this implementation, there are very few ways to get good, deep qualitative data. You can do focus groups, which are dependent on, you know, how many staff you can have involved, to have that many families in closer conversation. You often want to start there, just to get a sense that you're asking the right questions. I think it's also about soliciting student opinions, even on the measurement process, to say, hey, you know, we see these things are going to occur, these make sense to you. And so, certainly, there are a number of ways we'll be getting this data. Surveys, focus groups are just one source. It will be looking at those other key components of the freshman academies, and finding the evidence within our systems, or creating new places to store that information, that allow for tracking that information beyond perceptual data, in a way that we can get that data without having to trouble schools, as they go about the hard work that they go about day in, day out, as well as implementing the freshman academies.
Great, thank you. I'm really glad to hear the student piece, that students will be very much a part of the feedback and the data collection, so thank you.
Any other, Mr. Teal?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I'm going to dive back into statistics just for a moment. Can you talk about, you know, we're starting in the next school year, it seems to me that there will already be some disruptions, that we should already be on a trajectory over the next few years to see gains, right? Just because, sort of as we leave the pandemic and the disruptions that that's caused. How do we control for that if our base year is in that trajectory?
And that, that's a great question. We don't have a dearth of research on how freshman academies went through the flu pandemic. I'm not trying to lib, but it's a real challenge, because what we don't know is the moderated effect of the, of the pandemic. So, we know the general trend. We know that our students, and I don't want to speak of our students in a deficit model, our students are strong, they're resilient, there are many amazing things, but they are also living through a pandemic. What we don't know is how quickly things like attendance, you know, rebounds, how quickly our students, through our support, and those they're getting from their family and the broader community, can recover from whatever impacts they've experienced. And certainly, students have been impacted in different ways. And so, that is the one thing that's really difficult to say, is, you know, what does that trajectory look like? You know, I think we certainly get back on course, in an upward trajectory on those metrics, where that's in the favorable direction, but how long that will take, I don't think we know at this point. It's a conversation we have with our Council of Great City Schools colleagues and others across the nation, because we're all unfortunately living through this the first time, and just having a good understanding of after significant disruptions. And we've seen significant disruptions before, but not of this longstanding nature, and not in the ways that affect families like we serve. And so, just really getting a much better sense of how they recover, how quickly will occur through, we're going to continue measuring these things, attendance and other metrics. And so just starting to see some of that rebounding effect, hoping very soon, will give me a better understanding of when we might see a return to our initial growth line, and then surpass that as new initiatives become implemented fully.
The closest thing we can find is Katrina. So Katrina had a prolonged effect, so we were, have been able to look at that. It's a little different, but the prolonged effect is about the closest that we've been able to find here in the United States.
Looking at the, at page five, slide five, the causal metrics, student attendance, you know, is kind of self-explanatory, but the behavior, the social emotional leads, the achievement, can you, what, and on track, obviously, is very, is obvious, but can you, for those middle three or three there, can you kind of tell us what proxy metrics you're going to be looking for, to tell us how those are going?
Sure. So, when we look at student achievement, that generally means assessment results of some sort. MAP for interim level, formative, you know, those unit tests you used to take in school, is kind of the lowest level of analysis. And so what we like to see is that, curriculum changes aside, if you have a common curriculum, students have engaged in that, you start even at the formative level, seeing some of those unit scores going up. And then, those increases in learning, as evidenced on those tests, you know, reverberate to greater growth in MAP. So, it seems students are learning this curriculum better in this smaller learning environment. They feel like that small kind of feel to the school, and the closer proximity to friends and trusted classmates helps them to feel a little more comfortable in class. The connectivity to the real world that they will graduate into, does that deepen their engagement and interest in this data? It's things of that nature. And so, from a student behaviors perspective, you know, does having some of those friends in class help or hurt that? We would assume that in many instances, it would help to have someone in the class you can rely on and lean on. And so, looking to see if some of these pieces that are built around having that smaller school environment, and having a different foundation for the learning that occurs even in your core classes, will result in some increases to test results, students feeling more connected to their school, seeing our climate results increase as a result of that connectivity. And we've been measuring engagement for well over a decade, so being able to look back at where these students have been in that measure, adjusting for any dips, and just kind of seeing how they respond to the coursework that are being provided in this new environment, and whether or not they are gaining that better understanding across all student groups, so that we don't, you know, in another five, six years, have students come up and tell us they found this amazing program, you know, in their junior, senior year in this school, instead knew about it much earlier on, and can start charting that course.
So when should, going back a little bit to Ms. Erdenberger's point, when should we expect sort of the first report back to the board on where? on where implementation metrics are?
I mean, we certainly will be measuring in earnest throughout next semester. I don't set the board agenda, but certainly would be open to having discussions with leadership and board members as to when we can kind of stage those. But like I said, we're even starting now to get some of these foundational understandings about program awareness and things of that nature. So certainly, as we move into next school year, with a pause obviously for folks to get back into the swing of schooling, we will be looking for those initial milestones of implementation to start measuring even then, to get that general sense of how things are going with rollout. So we'll have data early on, certainly next semester. Certainly by quarter, we'll have some mini measurements by semester. We'd have much deeper, bigger measurements.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Smith, for that information. And because we love and appreciate all the hard work that you do, we're going to ask you to stay up here and present to us again on the academic calendar for 2021, 2022 school year.
Hello again. Okay, this will be a little shorter and may, well, maybe shorter and less statistical. So there are some new elements. And just to reiterate, this is the information level. We will be collecting a lot of feedback, continuing to do so throughout the next week to make sure that when we bring this back to action, you'll hear not only what we heard, but what changes we were able to implement. And in the instance when we're unable to, to explain why. I think that's a critical piece of asking for feedback, that we reflect that we heard all of it and what we can and can't do and why. So that's certainly something to look forward to. There are a number of elements that this calendar seeks to put forward, even in this proposed status or draft status, as it very much is. And that includes this staggered start day concept. And the real goal here is to reduce strain on key services that we provide to our families to make sure that those services meet their expectation. That includes transportation, things of that nature, making sure that we start off the year in the best possible way for our families with those services that they cherish. So based on that, we have elementary starting currently in this proposed draft calendar on Monday, August 16, 2021. The next day, Tuesday, that means August 17, we would have those entry-level students at middle schools and high schools to have the run of the school that day for themselves, to get a better sense of the building and its environment and their teachers without all the other students present. Those remaining students at the secondary level, 10th, 11th, 12th graders and all other middle schoolers other than entry-level students would join them then Wednesday, August 17, 2021. Having those older students start later allows for them to be home when maybe younger students, middle school students and others are there the day before. So that is a key component we're putting forward. Additionally, there are longer periods of uninterrupted teaching and learning. This is certainly the case, especially in the first semester, where training efforts that were currently, well, previous calendars, including this one, that were in September, have been moved later into October, more around the conference timeframe to really create that open space for teaching and learning to occur in earnest once the school year begins. So that is a component we're excited about. Additionally, just showcasing that there are permissible opportunities for recovery efforts and for extra duty pay, should staff want it during those breaks. And that's just to put forward that that is an option as we seek to recover our students as quickly as possible. So the work began really while we were still considering the current year's calendar and the need for change there, given the experience we're all living through. And that began in August with review and consideration of other calendaring models and conversations within our building. In March, as was identified earlier, we were able to meet with our friends at the OEA to talk through their perspectives on the calendar and the key feedback they would have to offer, as well as that which we should ask of all stakeholders, teachers, families, students, et cetera. And so certainly, that was something we heard loud and clear. Tonight, we have this proposal, this draft calendar proposal for you to consider and for our community to hear about. And we will be launching this evening a survey to all families, all staff and students in grades five and above to get any perspectives they have on the calendar. And we'll be asking, as I'll share in a slide more, all the things that we're really asking for their feedback on in both a targeted way and an open-ended response way. That will allow us from the 5th through the 14th to collect that feedback, to compile it and to create the final calendar, as well as the presentation that shows what we heard through that collection effort. We would then be back before you on April 19 with the final proposal and the feedback that we were able to glean that resulted in the final calendar to put before you. So the feedback we'll be seeking is across all critical components of the calendar and ensuring that if we had missed something, there's an open-ended response option for each area. So if there wasn't a question someone wished we'd asked, but wanted to provide that feedback, they could do so. We'll be asking about the start and end of school, of course, breaks, their timing, duration, balance, things, you know, do you like the long week for Thanksgiving versus having to go after Memorial Day? Just to really get that strong feedback as we heard from our colleagues. Additionally, asking about breaks, their timing, duration, et cetera. Conferences, their timing, there's this concept that we're asking about again, about the rotation of conferences, especially the one that bookend the spring break. That elementary staff, as well as students, have had an extended, to some degree, spring break as a result of having conferences right before it. And so asking about perspectives on that rotation. And as I said, lots of open-ended items, including one aggregate one with pictures of calendars, say, just in general, what are some feedback pieces you would share with us? That key feedback is a critical piece. Prior, we'd have a calendar committee and it was a very select group of folks who provided feedback. And this really has expanded and gotten us some really good feedback from the staff, as well as families, about their expectations and needs, and we seek to meet them. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I'd like to start tonight with a couple of questions. Just to confirm, what the survey, I think it said that it was going to begin on April the 5th. And so has it already been sent out today yet, or will it be sent out?
Soon as I leave this room, I'm heading saying. That said, anyone who finds this presentation on the current agenda meetings, you can take this tiny URL. That's an anonymous link. The first question asked, just to give us a little background, you know, are you a teacher, a parent, are you both? You can select all options that apply to include student or former student so that we can get a better sense, okay, teachers are really wanting this instead of, you know, I think it's more helpful to understand precisely who's giving you critical feedback. Teachers get a great opportunity to observe many of the, you know, how the calendar really affects their work. And so hearing that feedback loud and clear, I think, is of critical importance. And so that's kind of the first question, just to get that demographic understanding so we know who we're hearing from. But this, essentially, this same link will be sent to families in a targeted way. If we don't get an enormous response, we can follow up with texts so that families who may not have an email address on file in our system will get an opportunity to include just grabbing this tiny URL off the presentation or via email survey or text if needed.
And then just to confirm, through their open-ended part of the survey, teachers then would have the opportunity to address some of the items that Mr. Miller spoke about tonight in regards to the days that, or the extended learning days for the Christmas break and for the Thanksgiving break, spring break, the movement of spring break, and then also how it might affect, how those dates might also affect like the school year ending for the teachers, like coming back two days after the Memorial Day, as opposed to how it is now?
So in many cases, there are targeted questions about those specific considerations. So they wouldn't necessarily have to use an open-ended for that, but they can also provide a little more of their contextual thinking around that question as well, or address a question that wasn't asked, that they feel we would benefit from knowing. So they're really open to the respondent to provide us the information they feel is critical for us to know as we seek to make a 21, 22 calendar that really serves all of us as well as possible, especially our families.
And then my last question is just out of curiosity, once you have all of the surveys compiled from our families and also from our district staff, how do you go about disaggregating that data and then making the decisions from that point?
Sure. So it's a number of ways. So with the open-ended responses, you have to do content coding to see if there are general themes and then capturing a couple exemplar statements. So this really captures what, you know, all these people are saying in these open-ended responses. So it goes first through that iterative process. There aren't really a lot of good artificial intelligence engines that I've seen yet, and so most of that's manual work, taking the comments, long or short form, and getting a general sense to code them into categories so that we know, oh, we're getting a lot of concern about spring break in open-ended responses. Then it's about getting the general response from all stakeholders to say, okay, in general, how do people feel about the start, end of school year breaks or whatever topic, and looking at each topic in turn. And then disaggregating that based on those demographic considerations to say, okay, well, you know, generally, everyone feels this way across all groups. Teachers feel this way on this item. Parents feel strongly on this item. Generally, what we find is a lot of plurality in opinions across all stakeholder groups. And so we seek to try to meet those needs as best we can. It is a challenge to make adjustments. I do think you'll see adjustments before the calendar comes back to you. But what you find is, it's like the John Muir quote, when you pull a thread, sometimes you realize it's connected to everything. And so calendars are built on a lot of interdependencies and external realities, contract days, things of that nature. And so that's why I think it's important to share that greater understanding in the instance that everyone wants, you know, something year-round school, whatever it ends up being, to be able to say, we heard this, but, you know, here are our limitations currently. And to keep that information, as we did when we built this calendar, to try to keep those understandings we've heard from our community prior in developing each iterative effort and then going back to the community to see, have we come closer to the mark?
Thank you so much. I think the public appreciates hearing what that process is like and how you all go about doing it. Thank you. Colleagues, Vice President Erderberger?
Just a couple of quick questions. I'm looking at September and it looks to me like from the day school starts until the first break is like six, seven weeks. But there's a reference to a September, my eyes are getting old here, but there's a September curriculum day, but I don't actually see it on the calendar.
With a key, might still say September.
I'm sorry?
Good catch. So the curriculum day is the orange day, I believe it's October 1st. So the name needs to be changed. We used to call it the September curriculum day. For a long time, it occurred in September. And so that needs to be adjusted.
Okay, well, maybe that begs my question, which is why isn't it in September? Because that's a long time to have everybody pay attention. So what was the reasoning behind pushing it back even that little bit?
The real goal is to provide that long period, actually, of uninterrupted teaching and learning. And so that may be something we hear, is a concern of that long uninterrupted break. You do have Labor Day in September, but there ain't much else since the beginning of school, Labor Day, and then it's on into October, before then those first conferences, and then those PD opportunities occur. So certainly, that is something we'll be looking to hear about.
No, I appreciate that. It's always nice to think kids are sitting there quietly and learning for a solid seven weeks. But yeah, we'll wait, I'll look what you hear. Now, the other question is, with respect to one of the issues that the OEA raised about moving the Easter break, or the spring break, rather, what goes into that and is that something that can be moved if you hear from enough people? Or is there a reason why we have it on that week at the moment?
As far as, oh, spring break.
Yeah, sorry.
It's around when it's occurred for quite some time. Certainly, there's always the wish to move it later. And I think that is a real possibility, if that's what we hear, given a number of things, how NCAS testing is being done now, the amount of devices we have to allow for much more expedient testing in our schools. Because traditionally, right after that early, you know, first, second-ish week of spring break, NCAS assessments begin immediately thereafter. And so trying to work around all those assessment schedules is a real challenge. Because if you think, in January, we hit MAP, February, it's ALPA, March, we start into NCAS testing, April is the ACT, and then May, we come back with MAP. And so there's so much testing in second semester. But with that change to NCAS, their three-year testing model, which you'll hear a lot more about at a later date, I'm sure, it would provide some greater opportunities for flexibility around spring break.
So it's mostly a matter of fitting it in where we otherwise have assessments. My last question is just because I'm too lazy to count. Do we have the same number of professional development days in this calendar as we have the last couple of years? Or give or take? I mean, is?
Sure. Based on the originally adopted counters, same as this year, I believe the same as last. So none were added or removed. So it should be the same. Correct.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
Thank you, Dr. President Holman. And Vice President Erderberger actually already asked the question that I had, but I'll just put it on the record anyway. My spouse works for a couple of our schools, and so evidently, the calendar was kind of the talk of the town this morning, so to speak. And so she had a number of her colleagues ask about spring break, which I know you just answered. You know, and they had mentioned that they either live in a different school district or they have, you know, you know, one kid that maybe goes to OPS and one that goes to Millard or Westside or what have you. And so they had asked if it was possible to look at, you know, how other school districts are doing it, and maybe time spring break with them for those families, understanding, of course, that that's probably not the vast majority of families that we have.
So there are a lot of thoughts around that. We've heard in the past the appreciation that when we're not in complete unison with other districts, sometimes, not during a pandemic, but those opportunities that our city affords, being less crowded when just one district is off during that time, has been expressed as a benefit. Certainly, there are some benefits, as you would expect for your research director. I have two in Millard, two in OPS. So certainly, I'm experiencing that this week with my students from Millard home as well. So I certainly am sensitive to those things. That would be something we are listening for. There are questions on spring break, its timing, and looking for those types of perspectives as well, knowing that that does affect many of our families and teachers as well.
Mr. Smith?
Yep, just a recommendation or something to think about. Could we consider including sophomores in that August 17 start date? Just because some of them, they'll be first time in school, first quarter, so those kids will remain remote. And then also, they didn't get that first quarter opportunity. Next year, those sophomores, they didn't get that first quarter opportunity to meet with their teachers. And so being able to be there with just freshmen and sophomores versus, you know, everybody might kind of make that transition a little bit better for everybody. So just something to kind of reconsider or just that reclamation into school. So a kid who just started school, fourth quarter, he or she just knows that fourth quarter experience and not what it's like to, you know, have those classes are going to be different. And then again, of course, with the academies coming on, how we can kind of just make that transition a little bit better.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great point, Mr. Smith. Mr. Teal?
My questions have been covered. Thank you.
Mrs. Cassidy?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Again, you're the highlight tonight. My only question is just concerning the recovery effort, extra duty pay, possible days. Explain those. But students aren't there, but teachers are there, but can students be there? I guess, what does that mean?
So it would be an open invitation for our schools, thinking especially at the secondary level, whereas we had on-track discussions to support our schools through this last, you know, quarter of school and getting as many students, especially those seniors across the stage as possible. It was surprising how many didn't realize it was a permissible act. If they wanted to have some recovery sessions for a number of students whose family were interested in that activity, they were surprised that that was something they could do if they had staff who willingly wanted to offer themselves for that time for extra duty pay or however that works out, that that is something our schools could offer during those times. And so it really is trying to say, it is permissible if you want to do recovery efforts and have staff willing to support that effort, obviously through district protocols and processes to support that. But it's just showing it is possible for considering those times as additional learning times. Recovery efforts don't have to be isolated to the summer or extra Herculean efforts in the classroom during the regular school year.
Okay. So just to be clear, it'd be where all students would not be required to come, but it'd be almost like a case by case, which schools might have a certain number of teachers volunteer based on how many students are also signing up to engage in that recovery?
Correct. That was the
Kind of the idea.
Concept, as I was understanding it. Just showing that it is permissible opportunity during these long break periods that if a school wanted to reach out to some specific students for support needs, that you could do that.
Okay. I think the only thing I have would be a personal plug that we do the April PD day after Easter because today was really hard at my house. We stayed out a little too long at my family's because everyone's, we were finally able to see family due to people being vaccinated. to see family due to people being vaccinated, thank goodness. So that would be my only plug, personalized. It was hard today. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
I'll be you next Monday when we go down to Kansas to see my folks, so.
And I will be putting that on my service, so you'll know it's mine.
Thank you.
As a follow-up to Mrs. Cassidy's question regarding the intercession, and I know that you guys are still in the planning stages for this all, but would it be expected for all schools to participate in the intercession during the breaks?
We really are going to be looking to our schools to kind of guide us there and to give them some opportunity to be creative about how they might want to consider that time, whether it's enrichment or whether it's credit recovery or some other factors, really trying to use that time really right along connectedness as well, remembering that, you know, kids have been really disconnected and what other kinds of connectedness activities we could do during that time as well. So that's something that, once we kind of got past the calendar being approved, we would work together with our schools. We do see the spring break time as certainly being a time for where credit recovery, I know several districts in the metro did quite a bit of credit recovery during that week this year. So it certainly is something, and we talked about it recently, that it could have been an option for our folks. And some schools will want to do it. We have some schools that already do some of this work already with having some of these activities occur during spring break.
I was going to ask you actually to share a little bit. How many of our schools do you know?
I don't know the number, but I do, I am aware of some schools that do some of this already, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think you're free to go.
Thank you all.
Move fast.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Well, with that, we have three receipted reports. K1 Head Start February Monthly Board Report. K2 Information Update on Internal Control Deficiencies Identified in the 2019-2020 Audit. And K3 Updates Regarding Next Level Learning for Summer 2021. Moving on to closed session, Vice President Erdenberger?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary of the Board, Legal Counsel, Lisa Sturba, Scott Roberts, and Mark Summer, negotiations, pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate.
We have a motion to go into closed session by Ms. Erdenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
Whose voice was that? Thank you. And we have a second by Mr. Head. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Lisa Sturba, Scott Roberts, and Mark Summer, negotiations, pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 8:48 PM.
Let the rec reflect that the board came out of closed session at 9:46pm. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you for participating in today's meeting. We will now move on to the next slide.